Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, City Hall, October 1st, 2024, at 4:30. And we're going to begin tonight with our invocation and our pledge allegiance, and I will turn it over to Commissioner Carlos Bailey.
Hello, guys. Today, I'd like to introduce is Reverend Philip G. Johnson. He's a pastor at Taylor's Chapel AME Church. He's been a pastor there for two years. He moved to Bowling Green from Louisville, Kentucky, and he's lived in this state for 16 years now. And I believe he was born and raised in Indianapolis, Indiana. So if you could, I would love for you to lead us in invocation. And before that, I would love for us to have a moment of silence for our lost firefighter, Stephen Rosen Rosebrook. If you guys don't mind, I will ask you to stand. Pastor, if you don't mind, could you lead us in prayer?
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for this time that we're able to come together and fellowship with one another, Father God. And we just ask that this meeting continues, Father God, that we just be of one mind and of one accord, working with one another to further the business of this city. We thank you for each and every one that is represented here. And Father God, we just ask that you comfort the fallen, the family of the fallen, Father God, continue to provide them with what they need, continue to comfort them in this time, continue to comfort the coworkers as well. And we just thank you. In his name we pray. Amen.
But I ask everybody to turn to the flag as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailey. Thank you, Pastor. We have our firefighters here tonight, and I know we're going to turn it over here to a second to our city manager to make some remarks. But our thoughts and prayers with our firefighter team, Stephen, Rosie, Rosebrook's family, and our condolences. On some information I'd like to share, we continue to get incredible information from our city management team, and this is from the Government of Finance Association. It's pleased to announce that the City of Bowling Green received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award in 2025. This is, I understand, the fourth year in a row, 13th. Well, where's my numbers come from? 13th. Congratulations, Katie, you, your team. This is a Government Finance Association advances excellence in government finance by providing the best practices, professional development resources, and practical research for more than 22,500 members in the communities they serve. Let's give it up for our finance team. Ladies and gentlemen, we have some hardware sitting up here on the podium, and I would like to say that this is earned by our incredible city management team. Over 600 employees have earned this, and this was given to us by the Kentucky League of Cities last Friday morning, the breakfast that all the commissioners, city management, some of the city management teams, some of our department heads were able to receive, and we're able to bring this hardware home. We look forward to our employee appreciation event that we have every December, and we look forward to sharing this as we continue to accolade. But I just want to give just a couple of the highlights that secured this win and for the, out of over 400 cities for our Commonwealth. $155 million secured to increase affordable housing, new collaborative one-stop homeless LifeNav Center, a secure $21-plus million to create a 10-county mental health regional crisis center, planning not one but two new parks and multiple quality-of-life capital improvements, new roads, greenways, sidewalks, roundabouts, continuation of 17 years of excellence in awards in finance and accounting, not including this one, three new firefighter-stations, new fire trucks, police cruisers, new fleet management program, a dedicated police and firefighters academy being built right now, rightsizing our tax base to ensure livable wages, recruiting and filling critical vacancies, double downing on our transpark expansion and have it almost 90% filled with thousands of more high-paying jobs coming into our community, a new $53-million VA Center built in our transpark, the number-one economy in the nation under 200,000, fastest-growing city in the Commonwealth, partner with I-65 and Project Pride Beautification new gateways, many more projects, but creating new prosperity and auxiliary growth for opportunities for new businesses and averaging eight new ribbon cuttings a month. This belongs to the city employees, and this belongs to our citizens in Bowling Green. Congratulations. Mr. Mizel, you have comments at this time. Actually, let me hope. Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide a roll call?
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Mayor Alcott. Here. Mr. Mizel.
Do you want me to cover everything I've got? Do you need to?
We're good.
Okay, absolutely. All right, thank you, Mayor. This is, this is going to be a little hard, but last, last two weeks have been hard for our Bowling Green Fire Department. September 14th, Stephen, we call Rosie Rosebrook, our devoted firefighter engineer, tragically collapsed after the end of the 10K run, September 14th. He spent the next two weeks in the hospital trying to overcome that and fought the, a great battle, trying to get back, and we lost him on September 26th. He's surrounded by people that loved him, with his colleagues at the fire department, his family. And just want to tell you a little bit about Stephen and Rosie. Rosie started with our fire department in 2017, and in 2021, he became engineer, and has also worked as a paramedic, EMT, the Med Center EMS. He was known for his dedication to the community. The stuff he did at the fire department, the ingenuity, the new ideas he brought to the table with the EMT programs, the chief laid out in an eloquent, really excellent email that he sent out last week, just the accomplishments that he had in his short time with us, all at the young age of 29. And our hearts go out to the Rosebrook family, the fire department. He will be greatly missed. There's a lot of people hurting right now, but we will get this, we'll get through this together. We are a family here, and I think that's going to continue to show. They are raising some money. It's through the Bowling Green Firefighters Association. If you want to give to that cause, it's, I think, on their website. But just want to remember Stephen Rosebrook. In the next days and weeks to come, his family and our Bowling Green Fire Department, as well as our whole city employee team, as we remember him and his, his legacy and all he did for our community. Visitation will be tomorrow, funeral will be Friday, and just ask that everyone keep the Rosebrooks, our fire department, and your, your thoughts and prayers as we, we get through this in the weeks and months to come. So I'll leave it at that, and thank you, Commissioner Bailey, for your, your moment of silence. Moving on, my usual comments, if you are in the audience wanting to make public comments, please sign the register at the back corner of the room. And then I have a couple of cleanup items. I need to request a late file, Municipal Order 2024-234. Would like to add that to your agendas tonight, if you want to make.
I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Carlos Bailey, second. All those in favor, or excuse me, I went ahead. Sorry, Ashley, go ahead. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes.
And then I would like to pull ordinance number 2024-18 from your agenda. We need to do some more work on that before we bring it back to you all. If you give me that courtesy to pull number, item number 10, BG 2024-18, I don't think this requires a vote. We'll bring it back as soon as we get it tightened up and ready. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Need a motion to take that? We're good? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Our first item of consideration, sorry, first item is approval minutes for regular meetings, September 17th, 2024.
So move.
Second. Move by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Any discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2024-224. Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Melinda Hill. Mr. Mizel.
As you will remember, as I called Chief Brooks up, we had some promotions a month, a meeting or two ago, for some engineers due to the retirements of Captain Brian Folkerson, Captain Charles Tucker, and Captain Lee Hatcher. I'd like to again thank them for their service to our city and community all their years at the Bowling Green Fire Department. But that opens up some opportunity in the fire department for promotions, and I'd like Chief, like for Chief Brooks to go ahead and make his recommendations for these promotions. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. I know that you know that we're in a nightmare right now. And we're trying to come to grips how a better-than-ever firefighter at the age of 29 goes through an innocent run through the city and doesn't come back, how a brother, a son, a father and friend, how our firefighter is not here with us right now. Life's unforgiving sometimes, and it'll humble you, for tomorrow, and maybe even our next moment is never promised. But if we know Rosie, he would want us here tonight to show up and stand before you. You see, when I stood here in 2021 recommending Rosie for promotion, we had a pretty good idea he was going to make it better, and he did. And if we are to meet the expectation that you have, that our citizens have, that we have of ourselves, we are to sustain, to exceed those expectations, then tonight is important as we move forward. And you're right, city manager. The great news is that this is family, and we're still together. And that's what we got going for us right now, as we walk through this nightmare together. The three men I bring before you will allow us to sustain, maintain, and exceed those expectations that you have, that we have. And so as I bring them before you, you should know that we have confidence that they're going to get the job done. They're going to make it better, just like Rosie did. I'm going to ask that they stand if you have any questions. Let me know. Brian Fulton, William Moore, and Justin Reese, all of them are being recommended for promotion from engineer to captain. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Chief. All right, gentlemen, we have a little tradition here. If you brought family, we'd like you to introduce, and I would actually speak up because this mic right there in the middle, if it turns red, everybody gets to hear. If it doesn't turn red, no one gets to hear. So, and that's for our audience out watching. So, Brian, you want to start? You have any one?
Just me here today. I've got two sons that weren't able to make it today.
Good to see Brian. All right. Justin?
Thank you again for the consideration. I do have my family here. I've got my middle child, Avery, my youngest, Charlie, my mother in the white, and then my lovely wife, who said it's about time I tried for captain right there in the pink. So she's, she's been a driving force for me.
Smart lady.
Yeah.
Beautiful family. All right, William?
I'm not walking up there.
Ah. Come on, William.
My beautiful girlfriend, Joey, with me today.
Fantastic. Well, we're celebrating with you tonight as this is a monumental, milestone, making captain, and I think the chief's recommendations to see you fine gentlemen standing up here speaks loudly. Commissioners?
Congratulations.
All right, let's make this official. Mrs. Jackson, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations. Captains. All right. Municipal order number 2024-225. Yeah. Thank you.
Municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into grant agreements for flexible neighborhood grants with various organizations.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Beasley Brown, second by Melinda. Was that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mizel?
As you all are familiar with the Select Neighborhood Action Program grants, we budget roughly $60,000 a year to assist neighborhoods with improving their areas. We've got three before you tonight that we're recommending. $300 to Beddington Park Neighbors for the purchase installation of a little free library, $7,500 to Mount Air Square Homeowners Association to replace some diseased trees along their common property in Greenway, and then finally, $1,500 to Community Pathway, Inc., for the My Beautiful Conference and Leadership Development Event for Girls Ages 10 through 18, as well as some targeting funds for 30 youth to attend the BG Reinvestment Area Neighborhoods Program. So Karen Foley, our neighborhood, Neighborhood Services Coordinator is here, along with Brent Childers, can answer any question you might have.
Sounds like some fine programs. Commissioners, comments, questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2024-226.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application and acceptance of grant funds from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for Fiscal Year 2024, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Funds in the amount of $28,881.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
This is our annual JAG funding that we receive from the U.S. Department of Justice, their Office of Justice Programs, and the Bureau of Justice Assistance. This is money that we split 50/50 with the county. $28,881 is what we are expecting. We would use our $14,441 to purchase some mobile radios for police cruisers. I believe the county is planning on using theirs for some personnel costs related to prosecution of Warren County District Court cases. So Nick Cook, I'd like to thank him for working on this, and Chief Delaney is here if you have any questions on the expenditure of this, this fund, the funding. Recommend your approval.
Mizel. Questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2024-227.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management for Kentucky Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Funds in an amount up to $503,295 for the construction of a tornado shelter.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
We would like to request some additional money from the Kentucky Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for another storm shelter, and we would like, we'd like to put this one over in the Covington Woods area. As you know, that area was hit pretty hard by the 2021 tornadoes, a lot of damage to some houses, and some of those residents did not really have a good place to go. And so if we were to get this grant, we think the project cost is $671,500. We would be required to do a local match, 13%. We think, though, we can show that the land, that utilize the land as our match. Nick is going to work on that. The other 12, remaining 12% would be coming from the state to fill in the gaps, but this money comes from the presidential disaster money for FEMA that was from the, actually from the straight-line storms back in May of this year around Memorial Day that affected 56 counties. And so there was money directed from FEMA that went to the state of Kentucky, and now Kentucky is doling out this money, and we, we want to apply for it and apply it to another storm shelter in the Covington Woods area.
Just make us from number five to number six.
I've lost count. Maybe six. Five?
Six, yeah. The six, because I think we have five in program right now.
Right. It's in about three different groups, so, but this is the same setup as the last group that we had, where 87, or 75, 13, and 12 on the, on the shares of the, of the cost, so. But Nick's here can answer your questions on this one, and Brent, Brent Belcher.
All right, Commissioner.
Exciting that we're getting another tornado shelter. Thank you all for continuing to pursue funding to make sure our city is safe if, you know, the worst happens in the future. Would you mind giving our community just an update on the different phases, kind of where the first phase is again, and the second phase, and kind of maybe a timeline of when we can see those in place?
Sure. So the first round of funding that we applied for was for five shelters, two at Lover's Lane Soccer Complex, two at Preston Miller Park, and then one at Pettigo Park. Those are currently under design. The second round was a request for two shelters, one at Hopson Grove Park and one at Lampkin Park. So the city has submitted a full application for that, but we have not been funded yet. And then this will be technically, I guess, the eighth that we are requesting funding for. And so really, it's just up in the air at this point until we hear back from FEMA on this one and the other two at Lampkin and Hopson Grove Park.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any further questions? None? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2024-228.
Municipal order authorizing the conveyance of approximately 0.06 acre of city-owned surplus property located on South Park Drive at Paul Walker Golf Course to Bowling Green Municipal Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So you may be familiar with the little hut on South Park Drive. It's actually a water pump station for BGMU. They, they're needing to install a generator there to continue with any power outage for that pump, and need a little bit more space and land. Tried to get it along the road, but there's pipes and all kinds of relocation required. So we have, we've looked at just giving a little space behind it. It's not going to come out very much onto the golf course. We're looking at .06 acres. I think it may be 2,500 or 3,000 square feet at, at most, maybe probably less than that. So this is to approve that, that conveyance. Hillary's worked on this, and Andy's worked on this, and can answer any questions you might have. We'll do what we can.
Thank you. Questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2024-229.
Municipal order approving the purchase of a Caterpillar Skid Steer Loader from Boyd Company of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $65,400 through cooperative purchase under Kentucky State Pricing Contract.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
This is, was in your FY25 capital improvement budget for parks maintenance. They are in need of a Caterpillar Skid Steer with some pallet forks to replace a 22-year-old piece of equipment that we've been limping with. So they would be really happy to get this piece of equipment. We're going to give the old one to fire, I think, to use up at the training center to, to clean up things, that sort of thing. But this was out on the Kentucky pricing contract and asked for your permission approval to go ahead and purchase this piece of, of equipment for parks maintenance. And Brent Belcher is here can answer any of your questions on the use of this piece of equipment.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2024-230.
Municipal order approving the purchase of Motorola portable radios and equipment from Motorola Solutions, Inc. of Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $792,229.89 through cooperative purchase under Kentucky State Pricing Contract.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
This is another item that you all approved in the FY25 budget to provide 115 portable radios. They're called N70 Motorolas, and they are to match up with and upgrade our current radio system. The ones we have now are no longer being supported with maintenance when they go down, and we would like to move on with purchasing these mobile radios. There'll be 115 purchased, along with four additional ones for cruisers for the new positions that we would be hiring hopefully soon. And then there's also another five for upfitting some new admin vehicles. Total price, total cost was $792.29 for everything included. We found this out on the Kentucky State Pricing Contract Agreement, and I would like to move on with this purchase and request your approval. Chief Delaney is here can answer any questions on this one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Good to be here. Good to see you. Questions at this time? Okay, none? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2024-231.
Municipal order authorizing accepting number 2025-12 for floor replacement from KV Flooring, Inc. of Louisville, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $148,388.
So moved.
By Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
I'm having technical difficulties, so just bear with me one second. All right, this is for the flooring at, that we would like to do, was also in the budget for the Police Department, I believe. And we went out for bid on September 18th. We received three bids, KV Flooring, Inc., Carpetplace Flooring, and LAM Contracting. Lowest bid came in from KV Flooring for $148,388. This includes removing, disposing of all carpet and tiles at the police station 911, 911 Kentucky Street. We would like to recommend KV Flooring at the lowest bid of $148,388. Dave Hayner, our facilities manager is here, as well as Andy Souza and Chief Delaney, if you have any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions at this time? None? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2024-232.
Municipal order authorizing accepting number 2025-13 for interior painting from Circle R Construction LLC of Auburn, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $164,000.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey.
Like the last item, we have to keep our facilities up to speed with maintenance. This is for a paint job to the Police Department, as well as the NCS Building on, up on Main Street, East Main. Painting of walls, doors, door frames. We went out for bid, same day, September 18th, for this one, received two bids, Circle R Construction LLC and St. Ritchie Painting. The Circle R Construction came in at the lowest bid, it's 164 even. They're out of Auburn, Kentucky, and we are recommending the award go to, to Circle R. Again, Dave's here, can answer any of your questions on this bid.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? None? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey. Alcott.
Yes. Orders Number BG 2024-19, first reading, nonbinding.
Orders permitting code of ordinances, ordinance permitting Chapter 6 Building Regulations of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances.
Move.
Second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So this is basically some cleanup of our Chapter 6, and in your packets, you'll see a good memo from Brent Childers. The main part of this is the amendments to the, some verbiage. We used to call, we used to have a grading permit and a paving permit. We've combined those and gone to a site work permit. That's one of the biggest changes here, has a cleanup. The CDR process, as you know, now creates opportunity for larger projects to go, to get kind of a preview on Wednesdays with planning and zoning and a lot of other agencies, and we use the site work permit as, as approval mark before we issue a building permit. So Brent Childers is here. We've already been conducting this practice for some time. We just need to make Chapter 6 align with our existing practices, and Brent's here can answer any of your questions on this one.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mizel.
But we did go and meet with Builders Association, Brent did, got their support, and did not get any pushback from them, so would like to move forward with these changes. This will require two readings.
Have questions at this time? None, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott.
Orders Number BG 2024-20, first reading, nonbinding.
Orders permitting code of ordinances, ordinance permitting Chapter 10 Electricity of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
This is kind of a cleanup night. This is another one that we just needed to rewrite and clean up administratively. We changed a few of the fees in here, kind of, they were kind of outdated, been in there for a long time. But the, the main here, main reason here is that we go by the National Electrical Code, and our ordinance contains some, some items such as conductor sizes and some real detailed stuff that's already in NEC that we follow, and we believe, you know, there wasn't any use for that language in the ordinance, so we struck that. And then we probably haven't updated our fees in over 20 years, so there's a section where we updated our, our cost and pricing on electric permits and inspections and that sort of thing. Again, we met with Builders Association, Brent did, and his staff, and there were no issues in recommending your approval, but Brent's here can answer any questions on this one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? Okay, none at this time, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-233.
Unit of Sportor approving the reappointments of Dr. Gary Virst and Bo Wilkins to the Bowling Green Community Tree Advisory Board.
Move.
Second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. These two have served our board for the Tree Advisory with distinction, and asked if they want to continue, and they have, and I recommend their approval to continue to serve on the Tree Advisory Board. No questions, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-234.
Unit of Sportor approving the purchase of property at 1949 Creason Street, owned by Alderson Properties LLC and Paul Spurgeon, and authorizing the mayor and other authorized city officials to execute the real estate sale and purchase agreement deed and all other necessary documents.
Move.
Second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So we brought this, this item to you in closed session recently. It's a piece of property over on Creason Avenue, Creason Street, along the railroad, backs up to the railroad. We've had issues with drainage over on Creason for years, and we thought this would be a good opportunity to look at this as a good spot for a retention basin. And so Andy Souza, our Public Works Director, Brent Childers and others went to work and proceeded with, pursued an acquisition of this property. Hillary worked on the, the contract as well, and they're here can answer any of your questions on this, but again, this was one of the items we discussed in closed session recently involving real estate, and would like your approval to proceed with this purchase.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? None, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Okay, Mrs. Jackson, checking to see if we have anyone want to make some comments. If you want to make comments, you have, introduce yourself at the podium, and you have a five-minute, I'll let you know at three minutes, four, and five, if you have something. All right, Mr. Fishback, how are you doing, sir? Come on up.
I'm Mr. Brian Fishback. Prepared a statement here, should only take a few minutes. I'm here to speak about the Bowling Green City Commission Board's new planned river rafting facility that I'm guessing will be a part of the BG City Commission Board's Tiff District. I do not support this new planned river rafting facility because I do not support the Tiff District. However, if at will the current BG City Commissioners and the current BG Mayor vote to approve this planned river rafting facility, it seems that this planned rafting facility is planned to be a new tax dollar windfall for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky's government. And so it seems to me that a guarantee from the current BG City Commission Board to use these new planned tax dollars from this new river rafting facility for the City of Bowling Green should go to restoring places that were lost by the local BG and Warren County governments during the last five years or so, like to play, like to replace the public libraries that were lost near the train depot area and that were relocated to addresses of the Iron Skillet Court and the, or near the Warren County Government's new tennis courts, and also to reclaim the Community Senator, Community Center for Della Field, and to replace the grocery store that was located in Sugar Maple Square, that is now an area in the City of Bowling Green where a food desert is now located. Also, to place a walking track cushioner on the elevated walking track in the BG Parks and Recreation Gym that's located on College Street, that will be like the walking track cushioner on, or in Western Kentucky University's Preston Center, and also to replace a youth baseball field, softball field in the Della Field or Park of Bennett area where two youth baseball or softball fields were located about 40 years ago, where one of these youth baseball, baseball fields has been built over with apartments, and replace the facilities so that people who live in Bowling Green will also have new recreational facilities like the replacing of the public libraries and walking track cushioner placed on the walking track in the BG Parks and Recreation Gym that is located on College Street, and also new youth baseball and softball fields in Della Field, Park of Bennett areas in Bowling Green. And so to replace these things, Bowling Green resident, Bowling Greens residents will get new recreational facilities, just like the people who do not live in Bowling Green and who will be visiting Bowling Green will be getting new recreational facilities in the City of Bowling Green, like this new planned river rafting facility will be. And last, although, although not least, to use these new tax dollars to expand the sewage pipe system in the areas of Bowling Green that are now overcrowded with new apartments and houses and businesses that have been allowed to be built in the, by the local Bowling Green, Warren County governments during the last 20 years or so. This caused the residential overcrowding and also the congestion in the sewage pipes, congestion in the sewage pipes that were built over 50 years ago for this overcrowding that the local Bowling Green governments have allowed to occur during the last 20 years, and also use these tax dollars to replace the cost of unemployment in BG because hundreds of people in Bowling Green lost their employment when these call centers left about five years ago, rather than instead of local BG governments bringing in primarily factory employment during the last 20 years, like located in the Kentucky Trans Park that the residents of Bowling Green, Warren County did not ask for and do not, and did not want, and do not want, and did not get a chance on the local government voting ballot to vote about. Just like the BG residents had a chance to vote about the Tiff District on a local voting ballot, especially with the gerrymandering in Kentucky's Congress, and that will be a good start. And if the current BG City Commission Boards does not agree to these new tax dollars going towards replacing these lost facilities that I've just spoken of, then I think that the Bowling Green City Commission Boards should vote to not approve the Bowling Green City Commission's planned river rafting facility. Okay, last thing. Also, I may run to be the mayor of Bowling Green, being a writing candidate this year in the election on November 5th, and I'm just waiting to see how the debate goes for the mayor of Bowling Green. It's planned on October 14th at the Bowling Green Junior High School, and if the BG Mayor, BG Mayor candidate's at this debate supporting this Tiff District, or they support this Tiff District, Tiff District and this Kentucky Trans Park, then, then I will run for Bowling Green, Kentucky's mayor in this election and call for another debate to take place for Bowling Greens mayor candidates that will include me in the debate, and this debate will happen after the first debate and before the election day on November 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Fishback.
Thank you.